Good evening. This Thursday, March, uh, March, Thursday, October 10th, 2024. A special meeting of the Board of Education Wayne Westland Community Schools is called to order. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, 190.25. Please stand. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Next item on the agenda is 191.25. Roll call in attendance. Ms. Heinz, can you take roll?
Dr. Weaver?
Present.
Ms. Heinz, present. Ms. May?
Present.
Mr. Neal? Absent. Mr. Cox?
Present.
And I just saw Ms. Abney Mitchell. She's in the parking lot.
No, she's down the room though, so don't mark her till she comes in.
Oh, okay. All right. And Mr. Gray?
Present.
Okay, we have one, two, three, four, five to two. Have a corner.
There we go.
Oh, she's up.
All right. Next item on the agenda is 192.25. We have presentations. The first item on here is the audit presentation. So it says Ms. Clara, but yeah.
Hello, everyone. I have the engagement partner Jamie Essenmacher on the phone with me today. So she will be here for this presentation as well, just virtually. Jamie, can you hear us?
I can. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Sure, yeah.
Stacy, I can't hear them great, so you know, if something let me know.
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, okay, great. So first of all, apologies for not being there in person. I, I, I am currently in Colorado. I will be there in person for the board meeting on the 21st to present these results. So I appreciate the flexibility in, in being willing to let me call in here today to go over the results of the audit. So really, starting on, on page two of the audit, going over some key audit highlights. So for the 2023-2024 audit results, we are issuing an unmodified clean opinion on the audit, which is the highest level of an opinion that a CPA firm can provide. The audit was performed primarily onsite. There was a finding, which I will talk a little bit more about, just related to a little bit of audit readiness, that we can kind of go into further detail. But overall, from our standpoint, the audit went very well in the current year. And, you know, we are here presenting to you today in early October, so that's, that's a good sign as well. We did test two major federal programs in the current year. So we tested ESER as well as the SLG grant. Also, very happy to report here that we are putting an unmodified opinion on those programs tested. So there are no findings being reported from a single audit or a compliance perspective. In relation to the 2019 Building and Site Fund, as well as the Thinking Fund, we do perform significant compliance testing in relation to that, and those funds. And it was performed in accordance with sections required by state law of 351A and 1212. Also happy to report no compliance findings noted there as well. In turning to the next slide, three, so kind of going over the required communication, the plan, scope, and timing of the audit did, um, did go in accordance with what we communicated to you in our initial plan on June 25th, 2024, which seems like forever ago now, since it's October. But everything went according to plan. All the significant accounting policies are described in note two of the financial statements. No significant transactions have been recognized in a different period than when the transactions occurred. And there were no changes in accounting policies or adoption of a new accounting principles as of June 30, 2024. The most significant estimates on the district's books relate to the MIPSers Pension Plan and OPAB liability, again, consistent with prior year. And the disclosures are neutral, consistent, and clear with accounting standards. In moving to the next slide, there were no difficulties in performing the audit, no disagreements with management, no audit adjustments identified. There was one, as I had mentioned, what we call a significant deficiency. So this is not the level of a material weakness. And really, this just has to do with, I believe, just some of the turnover that happened during the process of the audit as we were preparing an onsite. So once we kind of come onsite, it's really in go mode. And there were a few items identified as the books were just continuing, continuing to be closed throughout the process. And then, as you're all aware, a little bit of turnover kind of in the middle of, of the audit process. So where that just relates to, sort of an overall audit readiness item. And we've discussed it with Katie and Jewel, and they've also provided what we call a corrective action plan that will be submitted with the report as well to the MDE. And also, it presents, you know, kind of their forward thinking and how this issue will be resolved going forward. So I'll pause there to see if there's any questions. Obviously, I can't see the room. Assuming Jewel or Katie might be in the room. So just wondering if, if any, there's any questions for me or anything else I could add to that for you.
Can you just clarify a little bit about that deficiency, what you mean about some of the issues with handover that happened?
Did you hear that, Jamie?
I think just a little bit more clarification on some of the issues.
Well, just.
On the deficiency.
I just feel like.
So sure, yep. So it really had to just do with the fact that, though, essentially, we started field work kind of, I believe, like mid to late August. And when we come in, essentially, when they're, you know, essentially ready for audits, it would mean that, you know, all the books are closed, we're not identifying anything, there's no journal entries that would essentially need to be done, you know, at that time. And we're coming in and just kind of doing the audit as we go. You know, kind of moving in the audit and then, you know, we're presenting. So, you know, again, when we got into the field, there were a few items that we did identify related to some construction in progress that was identified, as well as a few, I believe, state, state grant items. And so, you know, we worked with Katie at the time, and then Jewel, once she came on board, to, to kind of work through that, get those posted, and kind of keep the audit moving. So really, those are the key items. It has a little bit more to do with the readiness than the actual accounting piece of it, if, if that helps. You know, I think it was probably just a little bit aggressive to get, you know, with some of the changeover and some of the items that were just happening within the department, to have everything tightened up in a bow for a district of this size and ready to go on our original start date.
Thank you.
Of course.
All right, thank you.
But again, I will say that Katie and Jewel and, and the team there did everything that we asked. You know, they were working really hard to get us all the things that we needed and, and understood the urgency. And, you know, did, you know, we are here again, presenting today. So it was a very solid team effort to get here, and we're very grateful for all their assistance throughout this process.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie.
Yep. So turning to the next slide. So no significant findings or issues that were identified. The management letter will be received and dated, hopefully, the date of the board meeting, so October 21st. From that, we will then finalize the report. It will be submitted to the Michigan Department of Education. And then the data collection form will also go in and then be certified by Jewel. And that will kind of close out the audit 2024 process. So we are very close to the end here. And we are looking forward to the next steps here in getting all the reports finalized. We are not aware of any other management consultations with other independent accountants, and we are not aware of any fraud or illegal acts, and we did not identify any of them. Plant Moran is, oh, sorry. Next slide, Stacy, please.
Yep.
Plant Moran is issuing, as I had mentioned, an unmodified clean opinion. Essentially, that's what you've hired Plant Moran to do, is to come in here and put an opinion on your financial statements. We are, we are, we are going to provide a clean opinion. The financial statements are the responsibility of management. I will say that Katie and Jewel, you know, do a thorough review of the statements. They really work hard to understand and make sure we're getting all, all of the right pieces there. So they definitely take responsibility for those items. Plant Moran is responsible for running her own opinion on the financial statement. And then the audit was completed in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States. So that's really the end of the formal, like, kind of required communication. And then, now I'm going to turn over to Stacy to kind of do some highlights in relation to the financial statement.
Thanks, Jamie. Okay, so the, the graphics that I'm going to cover today are going to focus on the district's major fund, which is the general fund. So on the screen, you can see assets and liabilities. Total assets for the general fund for fiscal year 2024 were about 55.4 million. This was made up of 48% or 26.4 million of cash investments. 28.8 million or 52% of receivables. So this includes July and August state aid receivables and property tax receivables. And then the small sliver that you can see there is 117,000 of other assets, which consist of inventory and prepaid expenses. Moving over to the total liabilities, this total was about 23.3 million for fiscal year 2024. This consisted of AP due to other funds and units and accrued payroll. As you can see, accrued payroll is the largest portion of current year liabilities at about $12.1 million or 52%. This accrual is driven by 20, 26 paid teachers that are accrued as of June 30th, as well as the related benefits and retirement expenses. And then the orange portion, that is the due to other funds, or due to other, yeah, due to other funds for various purposes. And this was about 3.1 million, or I'm sorry, 7.2 million. All right, general, general fund revenue.
Can you repeat that again?
What, which part? I'm sorry.
The last part, about.
It's the blue, not the orange.
The blue, I'm sorry. Yes, I misspoke. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for that correction. Now, looking at revenue and other financing sources for the general fund, you can see from 2023 to 2024, revenue increased approximately $11.7 million or 8.7%. The general fund revenue is comprised of several different sources. So local sources totaling 22.6 million. This is primarily made up of property taxes at $18.3 million. And there's also some vocational education expenses in there totaling about 1.6 million, which was a decrease from last year of about 330,000. Another large portion is state aid, which totaled 113.1 million dollars. The general fund does have some federal dollars allocated to the general fund, and this is the Medicaid dollars totaling about 156,000. And then the last one is inter-district sources. So this would be Act 18 Funds Enhancement Millage, which makes up the majority of this balance. And that did increase about $1.9 million over 2023. The last piece of the pie represents transfers of approximately 751,000 and other financing sources, which includes proceeds from the sale of capital assets of about $239,000 for fiscal year 24. So as you can see, most of the balances did increase from prior year, with the most notable increase being in state sources, which increased about 9.4 million. And most of the fluctuation in state source revenue was due to discretionary payments. So that was an increase of $4.9 million from fiscal year 23. There was also an increase in the district's foundation allowance from 2023. That was about a $458 increase per pupil, which was about 4.3 million in additional revenue for fiscal year 24. Flipping to total expenditures for the general fund, these were about 123.9 million for fiscal year 24. Expenses decreased about 28.8 million or 18.9%. You can see the breakout of expenditures on these graphics. So this is by function code. So this would include instruction, support, athletics, community services, transfers, and capital outlay. This data shows us that the most significant expense categories for the district are instruction and support, which is consistent from '23 to '24. Despite the allocation, the instruction and support have both decreased significantly from last year, with only slight decreases in athletics and community services. General fund capital outlay also decreased about $450,000. And then visually, you can see another slice of the pie from fiscal year 2023 that was transfers to other funds. So this was zero in fiscal year 24, but this is primarily just a product of timing. All right, this next slide looks at the expenditures in a different way. So it breaks it out by salaries, fringe benefits, and supplies and other. So this does demonstrate that the district's expenses, 86% in both years, is comprised of salaries and benefits. Now, looking at fund balance. So this, this graph shows fund balance for the last five years for the district. In fiscal year 24, the district ended with a fund balance of $32.2 million, which is an increase of $22.9 million from fiscal year 23. And then looking at this as a comparison, so you can see that this is general fund fund balance as a percent of expenditures as compared to the statewide average. So the teal bar is Wayne Westland, and then the blue bars are that state average. And then the last at the bottom there, the percentage for Wayne Westland for fiscal year 24 was 25.9%. So that, oh, sorry, go ahead, Jamie.
Stacy, I was just going to add a little commentary to the slide related to the fund balance as it went up, down, and then up again. So really, this, you know, this slide is, is probably a little bit visually interesting to look at and might be a little bit of interesting to look at, you know, in the, in the full board meeting. I think here, the piece is, is, to be fair, you know, is kind of looking at some of the items that had happened related to some of the budgeting and some of the spending that had happened. And then some of the items that have been cleaned up over the past, you know, year and a half, year here in relation to that. So, you know, that kind of dip in the prior year, then coming out where, where it is right now, you know, I think is important, at least to understand from a perspective that if it's presented, you know, in, in the meeting in a couple of weeks, that, you know, there could be some questions around that, just because it is pretty significant in, out, you know, up, down, up. So I don't know, again, I'm sorry, I can't see the room. If Jewel or Katie's in the room with, with us today, Stacy?
Jewel is here, yep.
Yeah, yeah. So, so Jewel, I, you know, just kind of thinking through that piece a little bit, just because it does look a little bit, I guess, odd for a better, lack of a better word.
Yeah, if you wanted me to give just a short explanation of that, it's, it's the ESER funds moved the salaries 20 point something million over to the, the funded fund. And was able to reap the rewards of that this year. And that's a one-time, you know, ESER's over pretty much. So that helped us out to get that fund balance back up. But this year, I mean, we're, we're, we're going to be fine this year, and I'll show my budget as the next item.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you for that added context, Jewel. Appreciate it. Sorry, Stacy, go ahead.
That was also, that, that concludes the informational part of the slides. Any other questions at this time?
Any questions? No, thank you.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And thank you, Jewel, for coming in and giving them the information they needed for this process. All right, next item on the agenda is, oh, still 192.25. Next is the budget amendment.
Just go like this? Okay. So I just put a few slides together. This one up here? Is it this one up here?
No, it's the right yellow.
On the right?
Yeah.
Oh, pointed at that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so why am I doing a budget at this time? Normally, they're done mid-year or, you know, towards the end of the year. I'm only doing the general fund. The reason is that currently, our budget that's on our website and that was approved shows a significant loss and a reduced fund balance. And I, basically, I want to get the record straight, that we're doing fine, and that our finances are fine, and get that on the, out on the website and get it out, like, to the world, I guess. So I'll show my budget in a second, but I just wanted to let you know that this budget, I did not increase any revenues. I didn't increase for the supposed UAAL that we're going to get. I didn't increase for any additional students. I didn't increase for property taxes. I kept the, basically, the revenue the same as last year. I'll show you that in a second. An updated budget for all funds will be done at mid-year. So December, January, I'll do this one again, and I will have all those revenues that have occurred. And all of the funds will be updated at that time. So these are the details. I'm not including, we had added 300-plus kids from the budget that was produced. We've added 100 kids, actual kids, but from the budget she did before, it was 300 kids. We have a UAAL. We're supposed to get that on our state aid, and it's supposed to be around 5.6 million. That is a UAAL that comes in. This one's not going out. There is no offsetting expense, like the one that hung us up there in '22, '23. I didn't include an increase in property taxes. And I, I took us back up to, the 20 million of people that were over in that F Fund are now back over into our G Fund. And I added 5% to each line, each line item on there. So.
I'm sorry. Jewel, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Sure, go ahead.
So I know you said that this, you did not include, so UAAL, is that the MIPS or the 3%? Or that's something different from that?
The 3% is the healthcare that we'll have to pay back. The state's going to give us the money, and then we'll have to cut the checks to the people.
Okay.
But it won't affect our expense at all.
Okay. So that's not in there. And then the other piece, I wasn't sure with the UA, if that was the same. And then the other question I had was around, does this new budget that you're presenting this amendment include the changes to, like, what came out with the state aid budget? Maybe I missed when you said that.
No, we're not getting any state aid increases.
Right, but I'm saying, but like, we got an increase with 31A, and so is that stuff in this budget or no?
No, the 31A will be over in your funded, because that's a grant. So that'll be over in your funded. And then we're supposed to get additional funds that will help general fund, because we can, some of these people can move over, you know, more people can be put in it.
Right, but that just has.
But that doesn't reflect it.
Okay.
So basically, what my budget shows. All right. Just technology.
Oh, the bottom.
Yeah, just the next one.
We lost it.
No, that's the, that's the end of it. Now I go to the actual budget.
Okay, perfect.
I don't know if that goes up on the screen, the actual budget.
No.
Okay, doesn't. All right, you have this in your packet. It's a budget amendment. And it's to the general fund. And I just wanted you to note that it has that 17.4798 mils up at the top. Hopefully, that'll be 18 after November 5th. But right now, I, that's, I didn't want to prorate it or anything, so that's just on there. So the tack, the revenue is exactly the same, pretty much, as the audit. I, if you see, we're at 146,000 of expenses, but our audit was 123, okay? So even with our revenue of last year, '23, '24, and me putting those back in and increasing each item by 5%, we're at a break even, okay? So just, I'm trying to say that we're fine, okay? Next year, I'm not going to come back and say, oops, it's the other way, okay? Because this is like, almost worst-case scenario is what I'm doing in this budget. We're fine. We're almost at a break even. I don't have those items in here because they're not on state aid yet, and they're not 100%. So that'll be on the one in December. But I did want to get one out there that says, hey, even if we got no increases in revenue, all those people coming back over, the 20 million of people coming back over, we're at 146, we're, we're all right. We're not going to lose money, okay? We're going to be, we're going to be short, a small profit or small loss, you know, one way or the, but we're going to be close to the break even. And it'll be more detailed in December, but I just want, wanted to have that assurance that we're not in any situation where we're going to have this big flux up or big flux down. We're pretty, we're going to be, you know, we're fine, is what I'm trying to say. And so I hope you will approve this early budget.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
So thank you so much for all your work on this budget and, and your service to the Wayne Westland School District. So you saying that we are fine. Are we fine like we are with no more increases?
Right. I mean, that's not going to be the, the case, but yes, we're fine as far as, we didn't lose any money. We have, we're like 23,000. We're at a break even. Even with bringing all those people back over from, from ESER and back into general fund, we will still, we would still be fine, even without the increase.
Did you know how many people we brought back over?
No, not off my head. It's 20 point something million. It's a lot.
Kindergarten through fifth-grade teachers, just in ESER III. So I don't remember the number that we had out. I can get that for you. I don't remember. It was quite a large staff, though, number on there.
There's nobody in ESER, you know, anymore.
Okay. I mean, my, because my question, I guess, my, what I'm looking for, you know, because every board meeting, we have subscriptions that we have to renew. Are we fine even spending money throughout the year?
I, I put 5% in each of the line. I increased them from last year by 5%.
Okay.
Okay?
Can I just ask a clarifying question? Most of those subscriptions, are those already built into the budget, though?
Those are things we budget for? Last year, they're in there, plus a 5%. So you'd be fine. I got to think of a different word besides fine.
So a follow-up to that, because I just want to be clear. So I know we don't, we, I think in our, many of our contracts, and I know we're negotiating some contracts, but we have language around paying out bonuses if our fund balance is at, I think it's 15% or above. So are we in a good place to do that? Because that was, I think, initially put in place to spend down the fund balance. But it didn't have trigger language with it, so I'm just, I'm trying to figure out like, are we good continuing doing the things we were doing? Or do we need to make some changes? Cause I remember you saying this was a hail mary. So when I hear it's a hail mary, to me that means you need to make some changes, cause you might, you're not gonna get another hail mary.
We don't wanna have classes with ten loving kids.
Right.
We wanna have the right amount of employees. But we want to treat them well, we wanna pay them well. We don't want them to leave, we want them to stay here. So if we run efficiently, we should be able to pay people good wages, good benefits, and that's what we want, that's our goal and that's what we wanna do. So I'm saying, yes, we can give whatever their contract that we've signed already, we can pay and we're working on getting the rest of them.
Right.
Redfied. Don't go ahead.
I was just gonna say, any contract language that has, that speaks to where we are financially, if it's in the contract, we're, we're gonna pay it out.
Right.
And moving forward, that's part of the negotiation process where it's part of the compensation package when we present stuff, we're gonna have it priced out to see if we can keep things in the contract or if we need to have further discussions.
Okay.
And Ms. Claire, do you mind if I add that, yes, the reclassification of funds, but also, you know, the right sizing per se for the staffing, right? That really helps significantly as well. So yes, that, I kinda go to that hail mary, but on top of that, right, if we didn't do some of the things we did like staff to contractual sizes, really look at, as people are still leaving now, rights to still follow that same process, all of that together really got us where we are and we hope to stay.
I think that's how we get in a better place moving forward. That twenty million dollars that we took from Esser put us in a place to be where we're at now from where we were. But now moving forward, that really, I mean, I, I really don't think that the public, or maybe not even you guys at some point, realize the magnitude of what went on last year in regards to the stuff that we were, you know, we were doing.
Oh, we realized it.
Oh, yeah. I'll be honest with you, we all experienced it and it was painful while we were living through it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I think, and I'm not, we're still gonna continue to do things we need to do, we're better off for it.
And that's what, and, and I'm fine with that, so that's where I just want clarity, because when we say we're fine, we're good, thank you so much for everything that you've done, I don't want it to be misinterpreted, right? Like if we still need to be doing some things, then we need to talk about that and say that we still need to be doing some things, right?
And we are doing some stuff.
So that's what I just wanna be clear, right? And that we're on record with what we are saying, because interpretation, just, you know, and I wanna be clear, like I'm not, I'm not coming for anybody's job, that's not what I'm asking for, I'm not, I want people to be paid well, I just don't wanna be having this conversation a year from now, a year and a half from now, and people are saying, well, on October tenth at the meeting, you said X, Y, and Z, right? So I wanna make sure I'm clear, everybody else is clear. Yes, we still need to make some changes, right? We're in a good space, we don't have to make the drastic changes that we initially thought we had to make, but we still need to make some changes in order to stay on the path.
And I think Ms. Curry said, and I don't wanna belabor the point, but any position now where there's someone that leaves for, to, to move on to another organization, before we think about backfilling the position, we're gonna ask, do we need the position? And that was a practice we started last year and continue to use.
Okay.
Mr. Cox?
One of the funds that got raided when we were trying to keep our nose above the water was building and grounds. And I know that there were a lot of different accounts over there and I suspect some of them were, you know, jammed pretty full, maybe even more so than they needed to be, I don't know, I just know Tony and I know how he thought. One of the things that I would like to, to mention is that whatever monies that we need to have in there going forward, we should put them back. You know, it's, it was for purchases to be made two years, three years, four years from now.
Can I speak to that, Dr. Mr. Cox? So we did have, and we just actually, we just talked to Tony today, we had about fifteen million dollars, estimated fifteen million dollars that we had, we were taking from Esser funds to do major repairs, say the warm, safe and dry with roofs, replacement boilers and so on, that we pivoted back into taking care of salaries and so that was part of some of that money. We plan on with the new bond, everything that we took out of that space in regards with, cause most, when we got the Esser funds, we're, we wanted to put them in places that were going to impact the district right now in regards to roofs and getting stuff done that we needed done, so we're gonna supplement the bond. We're going to put that, those projects back into, cause I know what you're talking about, the money that we took from B and G. It really wasn't taken from buildings and grounds, it was taken from the Esser funds that we assigned, the board assigned to B and G. So that's, I think that's what you're talking about.
It is, and, and I know it was just being part of their. Yes, I, I'm aware of that, but I don't want it to be deficient anyway, two or three years from now.
Agreed.
And the other thing is, you know, we're talking about employee wages. We're on a policy, we wanted to bring things up here, you know, and I still feel that that's what we wanna do, for all the reasons that you mentioned just a moment ago. We want this to be the place people spend their career and, and what have you, so.
Mr. Cox, can I speak to that point real quick?
Yeah.
From a retention and an attraction standpoint, we're keeping that in consideration with any proposals that we're gonna make or that we're gonna accept from the union, for each union as we go through negotiations with all collective bargaining groups.
And the other thing probably doesn't need to be said, but I'm gonna say it anyway, we were told three times ago, this is, this number's good and it wasn't. And then we were told the next number's good and it wasn't, and now we're told, now we're stupid in the other direction, we got more money. If what we're trying to do is to let the community know that the school district is on a firm financial footing, how do we explain to the community what it was that occurred that, that so many people didn't see?
Do you mean for the twenty-two, twenty-three or the twenty-three, twenty-four?
Twenty-three, you know, it's like I said, you balance your checkbook and it doesn't come out right, it almost doesn't matter which direction, it, it needs to come out right. And so, you know, we're the same group of people that, that criticized one another for not doing it right when we lost money. And now we've got money we didn't know we had, but no one's being criticized, but still they should be. I mean, we, we need to know how we don't get here again.
Yeah.
And, and I, and I know, I don't expect you to answer that question, but to the board, jeez, we can't do this again. And we certainly, we certainly owe it some time to try to come up with some systemic ways so that future boards don't have to go through this too. I honestly don't know exactly what that looks like.
I, I think what that, that looks like is, we make sure we put the right people in place, but not just the right people that are good at their jobs, but the people around them that, and above them that are not afraid to ask questions. That if something doesn't look right, or ask questions, and people that aren't afraid to have questions asked of them. That don't see being asked the questions about, you know, the work they've done as an insult, but just as, you know, a team trying to make sure we get it right. So I think that the big thing is, it's, we do need to have policies, we need to make sure we have policies where work is being double-checked going forward, that wasn't necessarily always happening before. But it's also a very human answer, is making sure we have the right.
That did happen years ago, years ago there was a double-check mechanism.
I've heard that, yeah.
We need that.
And.
And we need that, we need to make sure.
And the other ironic thing about it is that the two people weren't necessarily the best of friends. They got along, but.
But that's probably what you need.
Sometimes for the best, yeah, sometimes for the best. Ms. Heine?
Yes, I would just like to say thank you for all your work, and one thing too, I'm excited about, we can do a really aggressive enrollment strategy to bring the kids back, you know, work on that, and then to really inundate the community with positive things that we're doing at Wayne Westland. For instance, I have a girlfriend on the Ramus School Board, I took her on a tour of the Career Tech Center, she was like, oh my God, I didn't even know that Ramus wasn't even a part of it, so that might be some future talks in the future to get other kids. But just even having like the city council, the different cities, like do a tour Wayne Westland, show them to our careers, cause they don't know what it looks like in these buildings and all the money we spend, cause they're gorgeous, you know, and even a little bus tour. I definitely like with Superintendent Gendre with that transportation, that was really good, that coffee hour, so that way we had the concerns of the staff, citizens, and that way it kind of, you know, helped us figure out a solution, that's one thing I do like, what we're doing, now we're being proactive. Like a lot of our community sessions has been, okay, let's be, come up with solutions and everybody has a, a word and we're working together and then they have a really good plan once we get finished with it. So I think we're moving in the right direction, then sit on the property committee, we're talking about all those new developments that's coming out at Wayne and Westland, these new homes being built, more kids coming to the district, so that's the thing, just being more aggressive with our strategy. Because I noticed like the American International Academy, they have three campuses, they're taking like three hundred of our kids like every year. So, and I've noticed too, like River Rouge, they have like signs in our school district picking up kids. So we just have to be, you know, a little more proactive with our enrollment to, you know, bring the kids back and really try to, you know, get their enrollments a little bit higher, so that way we have the money that we know is guaranteed for, you know, student that can help us out.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Well, my, I just wanna know what that, when we present this budget and we approve it and everything and it go on the website, what do that letter that we write to the community looks like? You know, we can't say, well, we found twenty million dollars, you know, or it was on the line and we moved it over, you know, it became available. What do that, what do that letter look like? I'm, I'm a parent and I'm, and I'm reading this letter, what does it look like?
Well, if, if you mean the audit, we're going to be putting on just the, the same thing that you have, I don't, I, I didn't think, I didn't know that we would put a letter, it would just be, this is the audited financial statements, we'll ask, answer questions as they come up. And then, then we'll have this budget, which, you know, doesn't show great, but it shows that we're in a positive situation. And then in December, after, you know, if, if everything came true that we think, even if not all of it does, but some of it, we're gonna have X, you know, another say five point six million from the UAAL. So we're not only gonna break even, but we'll have five point six to do some other things that need to be done. But as far as the communication, I don't know, are you suggesting that's what we should do?
I, I think we do, we, we moved to an auditorium, we had people up here crying for their jobs, we had people pleading for their jobs, we owed them some kind of communication.
Ms. Abney Mitchell, I think you're asking a summary of the things that have occurred since last year to this year, to give the community an idea of what we've done to get to a better place?
Right, we just can't say we moved the money on, the money on the line.
And we can also add yes to that and to that FAQ that we even started from beginning, right, to even update that. So as these people even have more questions after the letter, to keep that ongoing as well.
Mr. Cox?
This suggestion was made about a year ago, when we had a difficult thing to present to the community, that maybe we needed some help with our messaging from someone who professionally did that. Maybe this is one of those times.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree, I think we, we did tell the bad news to an auditorium full of unhappy people and then another auditorium for months after that, and we're telling the good news right now to an empty room. You know, no news cameras, no.
As Ms. Mitchell said, people deserve to know, like, why is it different now?
Yeah.
About twenty million, it does, it still doesn't make us look good. But, you know, understanding that we have, we got a department that it's a highly technical place and there's not a lot of people in that role and we've had some turnover, that can happen. Anyway, maybe, maybe some professional messaging would be a better approach.
That being said, it is sometimes harder to get press for the good news, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I was, last year getting phone calls from two, four, six, and seven, and emails at all times. Nobody, nobody's asked me about the good, nobody's asked me about this.
They had the tiger game today.
True, true.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna minimize the amount of work though that's taken place, cause we, there, there were some areas that, that occurred, but a lot of work has been going on for the past months that I think we do need to highlight as well.
Sure, sure.
And I also think the learning that occurred, right? So it's like, there were missteps, but in those missteps, this is what was learned, these are the corrections, right? Cause I think there's so much power in, when you talk about being transparent, owning mistakes, right? Or owning missteps, or however you wanna phrase that, so that it's not a situation where like, oh, will we be here again in five years? Will we be here again in two years, right? No, because we learn from this and these are some of the things that we learned, these are some of the things that we put in place, you know, like I think.
People would embrace that.
Yeah.
They made a mistake, figured it out, went forward, that happens.
Absolutely. So those are just my two thoughts.
So my other thing, my question about the budget. Cause I'm, is it, you know, we need to address an elephant in the room, I feel like it's an elephant. We really have an issue, what I'm seeing, what I believe is engagement with our students. We are getting emails every day about fighting, about, just like.
Or next to general, the student, student well-being.
That's alright.
Oh, I didn't see, I, I do apologize, I didn't read the agenda, but I didn't know somebody was here for that, but okay, alright. I have my own agenda, I'm sorry, I do apologize, come on.
I mean, on that note, do we, do we have anything else about the budget?
That was about the budget, to see if we had money in there available, okay.
And I mean, so far both items we have presented on tonight, we will also have presented on again at the board meeting, so.
Okay.
So we'll get a chance to talk more about this then, unless you have more questions for Ms. Claire. Okay, well, seeing on, we'll move on to, Mr. Besik.
Come on up.
Now that we've hyped up what we're about here about to say.
I'm your cheerleader.
Mr. Besik, who was my assistant principal at John Glenn, oh, nineteen years ago.
Which makes one of us very old.
You wanna come back?
Thank you.
He was in charge of student discipline then, so.
Hey, that's what we need.
And I will say, Mr. Gray, I never saw you once for a disciplinary thing, it was always just something, you know, we're just talking about something.
There's still tongue.
So, you know, Ms. Heine said something that's very key to this entire presentation tonight, she says, she said being proactive, you know, when we're talking about anything in our district. So our presentation is proactive strategies for student support and well-being. And this, this kind of, well, just as introduction, I'm John Besik, Director of Student Services with Amanda Fawnin, who's our Supervisor of Social Emotional Learning, and Jenny Johnson, who's Director of Communications. And the three of us together make up the crisis team leads for our district. And strategically chosen because each of us has a really key job in the district and we address different things in, in times of crisis, which you will see as we go on here. As you're aware, September twenty-seventh at John Glenn High School, following the game, there was an incident of several students fighting. We had our, of course, our Westland police were on site, they felt that they, they couldn't contain the, the, the things going on, so they, they called for some other jurisdictions to come in, I think they called for six different jurisdictions to come in under mutual aid and, and support them. And it took quite a while to get things under control, I think when all was said and done, we had thirteen students who were either detained or arrested. You know, and several parents were hustled out of here and there's a lot of work that was done following that by our, by our, our police department to kind of summarize what happened, come up with a, a report that, you know, said this is what happened and, and this is what we need to do to clean it up. So obviously there's follow-up discipline that goes on, and we started disciplinary hearings yesterday to address some of these students who were arrested during the, during the game. But even more important than that, we felt that addressing the safety and the security at future games was extremely important. So Ms. Curry called a meeting with our police department partners and several people from the district. And we sat down and we said, what do we need to do to keep our, our athletes safe, our band members safe, cheerleaders, our coaches, and officials, and, and of course our police, police department, people who come in and help us. So we talked about what we were going to do, we came up with some pretty drastic things, which as you know, included limiting severely the, the people who are allowed to go to the game. They had to, each person, each athlete or participant could have five people that they had to be listed. The police set up, you know, a, a different form of, of supervision. And what happened that night, if you were around John Glenn last weekend, and the same thing happened at, at Wayne as well, but the, the result was probably the, the, the best behaved game I've seen in twenty years in this district, where people were there watching the game, Ms. Curry was there, Dr. O'Feely, Mr. Toco, Ms. Johnson, myself, the police chief was there and his two deputies were there. The, the partnership between the police and the district was like totally on display and it made a really nice atmosphere for a game. When that ended, the first thing that Jason Menloy, the athletic director at John Glenn's did, he emailed us and said, the officials said, you know, they, they talked to him afterwards and said, this was just a, a wonderful. and said, this was just a, a wonderful experience for them. And for officials to tell an A.D., you know, it was a nice experience. It's, it really says a lot about what we did. Mr. Malloy said, what are we going to do? How are we going to start bringing our students back? So right away, we think, you know, we, we have it under control. Let's not punish the kids who are doing the right things all the time. So that's our next step is to make sure that the students are there and make sure that we're having a nice enjoyable evening. It's a wonderful time to be in high school when you go to a Friday night football game. So those are our next steps. So those are all reactive steps to things that happened on the 27th. And as Ms. Hines said, we want to be proactive. So in our discussions, and especially with Ms. Curry, we were talking about everything that we do in our district that is proactive. And the list, we could probably talk for three hours about what we, what we do, but we're not going to do that. We're going to go as quickly as possible, just cover some things really in an overview. So you are aware of what goes on in our district. And I think a lot of the things you're going to say, I kind of knew about that. But when you look at it in, you know, in summation, it's really impressive list of things. So the key areas I'm going to talk about really quick, and it will not be long, I promise you. Behavior and discipline measures, the crisis teams, mental health services, threat assessments, safety reporting platforms, community partnerships and resource centers. So with our behavior and discipline, correcting behavior, suspensions versus alternatives to suspension. As you are aware, suspensions do not change any behaviors. It removes the student from the classroom. It removes the student from the school. When they come back, chances are the behaviors are not going to change. So when we look at alternatives to suspension, whether it's, you know, we, we talk about several things with restorative practices. That, that we try to keep them in class or if they do suffer consequence, when they return, we employ those restorative practices to try and help them see what happened, who they hurt and how they can proceed and not have those same issues again. As you know, code of conduct and parent student handbook are available to all students. They're available online as well. They are updated yearly. Last week, a lot of parents called me and said, I thought the district has a zero tolerance policy when it comes to, to behavior. Well, yes, we do have a zero tolerance policy. Anytime there's an issue, we deal with it. But zero policy, our zero tolerance doesn't mean that if there's an issue, we are immediately going to suspend or expel somebody without due process. So we're going to look at each individual instance and then decide how we're going to discipline that student. In some cases, it might mean an expulsion, it might mean disciplinary hearing. But in many cases, it might mean supporting that student, getting them help they might need and getting them back into school as quickly as possible. Obviously, we have suspensions in our district. The, the numbers I looked at last week is we are down about 37 suspensions from the month of September. And we're tracking if we go to this month, as we're going now, we'll be down about 40 suspensions overall this month. So these restorative practices that we're using or employing at the different levels, they're working. The key here is restorative practices are not used in place of a consequence. They're used in conjunction with. So you, you're not going to say, you know, you're coming to the office and you did something wrong. We're not going to say, you know, we're going to sit down, we're going to problem solve together, we're going to have a restorative meeting, you're going back to class. The restorative part takes place after the consequence. So it might be a one-day suspension. And, but you do that instead of a five-day suspension. You bring them back quick, you get them back in the, in the classroom, you restore that, that relationship with the teacher and you move on. As you know, we also have disciplinary hearings. We have a discipline review committee. And each week it's set up. If we don't have anything that's scheduled, we, we dismiss the people. But each one has three different rotating administrators from the buildings. And we have them spread out. So each year, every principal, assistant principal has like four or five times they come to these meetings. Ms. Fawnin is also part of this. And we also have a board member. Currently, Dr. Weaver is doing that, but now Ms. Abney Mitchell is also going to share those responsibilities with Dr. Weaver. We have the students come in, we kind of, we, we read what happened. We ask some clarifying questions and give them the opportunity to, to state their case as well. The biggest change in the last five, six years with the hearings is that we now, as with Ms. Fawnin in there, we are providing support for students. Instead of the question of what are we going to do to punish these students? It becomes what are we going to do to issue a consequence and support their needs? So in many cases, Ms. Fawnin will say during the meeting, you know, I'm going to do a warm handoff for Carisalis or, you know, we're going to use our partners with Wayne Youth Assistance or, or Westland Youth Services and, and get them the help they need. So in many cases, yes, they do get a suspension, but while they're suspended, they get help. There's an also that, that as you know, there's appeals for hearings. You know, that Mr. Toco is currently our appeal officer. So if they're not happy with the, with the, the decision, they have that opportunity to appeal. For those students who are, who are expelled, there is a reinstatement process. And the reinstatement process is we have petitions for reinstatement. Once our petition is submitted, there is a reinstatement committee that meets. There is one board member that we ask. There is a current parent that we ask to serve on the committee. There is a current administrator and myself. We review the, the petition. We look to see if they have taken advantage of these supports that we have given them. And then we make a decision whether or not to readmit those students to our district. Also, the last couple of years, we have used this thing called the C-stag Threat Assessment. C-stag, I believe, was 2008 or so, 2001, 2008. But it gives us an opportunity, because we, we know many students will make threats throughout the course of, of their, their time. We have to decide if these threats are credible or not. So a threat assessment is a structured process. You evaluate the potential safety threats posed by students or situations. In Wayne Westland, over 90% of students receiving the C-stag assessments were able to return to school. In the past, the practice was if a student made a threat, we would keep them out of school until we can convene a committee, bring them into the board office and then do a threat assessment. By the time that happened, it was sometimes three, four or five days of school they were missing. When you step, or when you administer the C-stag assessment, it can be done immediately within the school. If, if they come back and, and something is not a, a serious threat or a transient threat, we can have those students back in the classroom within probably an hour or less. If it comes out as a substantive threat, we can also get them the help they need. And in some cases, we'll say to them, you know, you can't return to school until you see a mental health care professional that says you're not a threat to harm self or others. The interventions to prevent harm, including behavioral assessments and support that we have, it, it was, it's something that prior to that time, prior to three, four, five years ago, we didn't have that at all. So it becomes, the, the school, the teams in the school do these threat assessments and it gives them a chance to see what the needs are of the student. In many cases, the students making the threats have something else going on. They need our assistance and support.
So our suicidal ideation assessments, I just want to share with you that we have completely looked at our risk assessment process over the summer with a team of mental health staff and other district staff. We've been working with the Wayne County Suicide Prevention Coalition. So our risk assessment process was completely looked at and there were some pieces that were redone. One thing that we added was we now have an evidence-based screener. So prior to this year, there was a screener that was created internally, which is not rare. There's a lot of school districts who are doing that. So we now are using the Columbia Suicide Severity Rating Scale. And the reason why we chose that, it's the same screener that a lot of our local hospitals are using, law enforcement, military, and it really provides an opportunity so that students don't have to be screened multiple times. Again, an evidence-based screener. The other things that we do is we fully trained all of our mental health staff by the individuals who created the screener through Columbia University. So we had them come out in August and completely run through that training with our staff. These assessments, again, are completed right at the building. They allow our mental health staff to determine a level of risk, whether low, moderate or high. It also provides steps for our staff to then do what they need to do to make sure that we can bring our students back safe. All students have the suicide prevention lifeline on the back of their ID for grade six through 12. So we did want to bring that up. And then all of our staff are also trained in question, persuade, refer, which is suicide prevention training. This year, we are going to be starting training our students. Because we know that students will probably tell a peer before they tell an adult. But our adults had to be trained in what our students were going to be trained in first so that they can understand the steps and what to do. So I wanted to share too, that, that one thing that we worked on with the suicide coalition was that data was not being tracked among districts around how many suicide risk assessments were being completed. So one thing we did here in Wayne Westland is we led a subcommittee to create a data tool amongst the nine districts that are on that coalition to start collecting some data. So I just wanted to share with you, last year's school data, we started collecting that in March. So from March 1st through the end of the year, we had 47 suicide risk assessments completed. So far this school year, from through October 4th, we've had 29 suicide risk assessments completed. What this data allows us to do is make evidence or make data-driven decisions as a team. So not only Wayne Westland, but amongst other districts and with our suicide coalition, our local hospitals, mental health partners. But what we can plan for are certain spikes. We can look at certain grades. For example, amongst the coalition, we now know that sixth grade is the highest grade where students are having those suicide risk assessments completed. We can also plan for certain times of the year. We could also plan to go after funding to support programs to prevent these things from happening. So one example of that is with the coalition, together we went after some funding. We now are going to be able to provide peer-to-peer support programs to any of our middle or high schools that want to do that. And it will be free to the district. It's funding that's coming from that coalition with the data that we can support. And also provide meaningful professional development for our staff. There were many years where just professional development didn't really apply to our mental health professionals. But now we can provide meaningful development, professional development specifically for them, which is done every year.
So I think you heard John say it at the beginning. We do have a district crisis team. The three of us are the leads of the team. We have other members from other departments too, from transportation, technology, food and ser, food service, buildings and grounds, our executive team. We have a comprehensive team that works in different ways and different formats when we have a crisis. Specifically, this team right here, we have a lot of letters. We say we collect a lot of letters, almost all the letters of the alphabet. We are trained in ALICE, crisis response, critical incident stress management, question, persuade and refer, C-stag, which is our threat assessment platform, reunification process and grief and loss. Crisis can come in any way, any time, any shape, so we are prepared for all of it. And a lot of it that was kind of aha to us is a lot of times it's after the crisis. You think right away, you have to have your team prepared to handle the crisis as it's happening. But when we took critical incident stress management, we realized how important it is to really follow through and do that debriefing afterwards and check on our people. So we feel fully trained for all of the different crises that may happen. And because of that, we are able to offer support to our building crisis teams. Thank you, sir. The building crisis teams are the ones that handle the everyday crisis that happened in the building. Whether it's a child getting a nosebleed on the playground, it's a staff member feeling ill, it's a gas leak, it's the sensor in the kitchen that sets off the smoke alarm that has happened, I think, at every building this fall. They handle those and we, they are trained to handle those. What we do is we offer them support and backup if and when they need it. I would say probably one of the things that we respond to the most, that we help them with, social media threats and grief and loss when something happens. That's kind of when we maybe deploy to them. In addition, we meet with the building crisis teams, with their crisis team. We provide tabletop exercises to them. We walk the buildings when they are doing their trainings and their drills. Not only to offer them feedback, but to get feedback from them. It's great to put a process on paper and hand it to somebody, but you really have to see, how does it play out? How does it look in a school? What works, what doesn't work? So we're really diligent about doing that and that's why you see meeting dates are on there. We attend their meetings as much as we ask them to attend one of our monthly meetings too. And our tabletop exercises this year will include ALICE-trained things, but also everyday crisis that are happening in their building. So their tabletop exercises are never going to be that violent intruder. Their tabletop exercise may be, non-custodial parent is in the office demanding to have their child. It is something that is seen in our schools every day and that's what we're practicing with them.
So I'm just going to speak a little bit about the district crisis support team. So that's more the grief and loss support that's typically provided to our buildings after an incident. Unfortunately, we do have quite a few of those that occur, I would say probably around five to six a year. It can happen with the loss of a student, the loss of a staff member, a volunteer that was an impact to that building. So what we do really is we, from a district standpoint, is we help them plan and figure out what it is that they need, the increase in support. We really lean heavily on the building crisis team, on the mental health staff. They have the relationships with the students. But oftentimes, we are supporting through arranging additional social workers, counselors, psychologists and what that looks like. So we're meeting with them in the evening or on the weekend, whenever the crisis occurs. And we're planning what that's going to look like for them. We're providing resources for families so that if they need additional support after, the support after the following day, we are doing Carisalis referrals for families. We are referring them out to mental health providers in the community. And then also we're working with people like Higera, who is putting together a youth mobile crisis unit. We will be able to bring them in for mental health crisis. I'm excited to say that we're in the process of working on an MOU with New Hope Center for Grief Support, which will be free to the district, which can provide bereavement training for staff, groups for students who need it, support in grief and loss if we need additional support. We're also looking at bringing in a, a dog for the district to be a part of the district crisis team. And that dog would be just another member, a layer of support that we've looked at. So just want to share all the things that we're doing.
So we have two things in our district that we use to kind of monitor and give students the opportunity to, to let us know if something's happening. The first one is Lightspeed. That's more of a, a monitoring tool that we use for, you know, students who are online. Any student who's using a district device, whether it's at home or school, if they, they type in any keywords, it gives us an alert. It alerts whoever they, we list like six or seven people per building. So if someone, for example, there was a student last night that typed in a, a self-threat. Lightspeed let us know at 3:30 this morning that there was a student who, you know, was, was possibly suicidal. So at that time, the building principal, in, in some cases, it's the principal and in some cases, it's me, we make a call to local law enforcement and they immediately go out to the house and make sure that student is safe. And if all the ones we've had this year, I can't remember if there was one parent who was actually, you know, upset that we are checking on their child to make sure that they are okay. Parents by and large are very, you know, pleased to, to help us out. The only downfall with Lightspeed is, and we had that today. I believe it was one of the high schools was talking about Romeo and Juliet and they gave them an assignment. And all the class at one time went and talked about Romeo and Juliet and how suicide fits into the, the story. And I had, I think, 37 per hour of these alerts from Lightspeed that says your students are looking up suicide. So you have to kind of go through it, you know, and take every, with each one with a grain and, grain of salt, but you also can't ignore every one of them. You have to make sure that you, every, you know, everything that you see kind of checks out. And it also gives the, the students, because in some cases, if, if something comes across my desk, I'll call the principal of a building and say, you know, can you get that student down there immediately? It does two things. It checks on the student to make sure they're okay and it gives them that whole sense of, yeah, there is someone, somebody watching me when I'm using this district device. And there's someone that's always checking to see if I'm, if I'm, you know, doing what I'm supposed to.
We know that communication is important, but clear, concise and immediate communication is key. And that's really what okay to say is. This morning, the incident we had at John Glenn High School, that was initiated by several okay to say tips that whether it was students, staff, community members, were able to confidentially report what they had seen, what they had heard or what they were told. And okay to say at what time this morning, Mr. Besik? Oh, early o'clock, called Mr. Besik and he jumped on it right away. So we have okay to say on posters, on newsletters, on our social media. Our students are very well aware of it. They use it. So do our staff, so do our parents. That is something. That is something that you will continue to see everywhere, kind of like the crisis hotline number is on the student IDs. Okay to Say is something that you will see throughout the district because it really works.
Just one more note about Okay to Say is that it's twenty-four-seven. It constantly monitors, and so, you know, I think Mr. Tocco, Dr. Ophelia, and Ms. Currie can attest, I've called them middle of the night, sometimes, you know, whether it's, you know, midnight, two, three, four in the morning. They give us the tip, we get law enforcement on it immediately, and again, it's very proactive, and it's very, it's a great tool that we have. Okay. So, as I mentioned, the local law enforcement partnership, the school resource officers we have right now, just the relationship that we have, and I've mentioned this many times, in twenty years, it's the best relationship we have with our local law enforcement. Westland, Wayne, Canton, and even Inkster now, we have really good communication with them. We can ask any of them for support. We can ask them for just about anything, and they will, they will let us know. Even with the new chief in Westland, I know he's really good at communicating with all of us, so we appreciate that. When we have those issues where we need outside support, where like we had that mutual aid thing, the surrounding districts are really good about sending people and just helping us out. The, in the event that we have to have, you know, the support, they have a coordinated response, and it's, again, the whole thing is just so we have a safe supportive learning environment for students. When we have police in our, in our buildings, we do send out a communication because we know that in the absence of true communication, parents rely on rumor and social media to get the message out. So, when Jenny sends something out, we do it as a proactive measure, again, to make sure that the facts are out there and, you know, kind of stops any, any of the rumors in the tracks.
So, CARESALIS is the service that we use to refer students for mental health or substance use services. So, I just wanted to share with you the data from last school year. We had four hundred and ninety-seven cases, two hundred and six appointments set, over twenty-four thousand different types of communication, and I wanted to show the hours. It's five hundred and sixty-three hours, and the majority of that was with clients. So, that means either with staff, with students, whoever the person was seeking services. The top reasons last year that individuals were seeking care in our community, our school community, are listed on your screen, so depression was the top reason, followed by trauma, anxiety, and disruptive. So, I can pull that impact report at any time. If anyone's would like that data, just let me know. Also, just touching on our student and family outreach, just want to remind everyone that we do still have our Family Resource Centers. We're currently at John Glenn and Franklin Middle School. Our Adams site was closed over the summer while construction was being done, and what we're going to do to consolidate resources is actually close our John Glenn and Franklin locations. We're going to consolidate back to just one at Adams, so we're going to be in a bigger space in the back of the building, so we're moving in there currently right now. We also still have our food pantries through Corwell Health. That's a grant, so again, no cost to the district. Those are in seven of our schools throughout the district. We have two school-based healthcare centers. That's at John Glenn and Adams Middle School. And then, just examples of our community partnerships, so a lot of these are who the Family Resource Center is referring to, local health providers, food pantries, clothing assistants, social service agencies. And then, just the community impact that that has. We just want to make sure that our students, our families, our staff are well aware of the resources that we have. Please, if you know someone who's in need, refer them to our Family Resource Center so we can make sure to get folks the help that they need.
One last thing, that, you know, we started off by talking about behavior, talked about discipline. Behaviors are not unique to Wayne Westland schools, whether it's, you know, Oakland County schools, whether it's Detroit schools, every district has issues. The uniqueness lies in what we provide students and everything we just talked about. Mentioned proactivity to start with, and that's exactly what we have here. We have all kinds of support for students, we have all kinds of support for staff. I think it's important that we are sharing these things with parents so they know all the things that we have in place. Many of the things we have, hopefully, we never use when we talk about our ALICE training and so forth, but the key is that we have them at our disposal, we have a team that is ready to use them, and, you know, in the event that we need them, we're going to do a really good job of meeting those challenges. Do you have any questions?
No, I do.
Nope. Ms. May?
So, I have a few, and some of them, some of them you may not be able to answer tonight, and that's okay. So, I wanted to start with, first of all, thank you for this presentation. Thank you for sharing all of this information. I think this is great. I think that it is very important for our community to know that it exists, right, and how to access it. So, for starters, which I'm going to go, so I'm going to start from the bottom of my questions. So, the first one is around CARESALIS and just some follow-up information around that. And again, this may be something you have to provide later. So, I'm curious to know, like, the definition of communications, like, what does that mean when we say that there's over twenty-four thousand communications? And then, I'm also curious to know how many of the cases are students, because this is utilized by staff as well.
Correct. Yes. So, the question about communications, that can be any kind, so CARESALIS can communicate with a client via text, email, phone, it could be them calling or CARESALIS calling them, so that's the answer for communication.
So, it could be like setting up an appointment that would count as a communication, not necessarily, because it doesn't, communication doesn't necessarily mean service. It just means we've contacted, we've had some type of contact.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to clarify.
And then, I'm sorry, can you repeat your second question?
I wanted to know how many of the cases were students, because this is utilized by both staff and students.
Correct. So, CARESALIS, what they allow us to do is when we do referral for a student, we are able to view on the backend the communication chain to make sure that there's no kinks that we need to step in and help with. We can't view that for staff or for anyone over the age of eighteen because it's confidential. So, I would have to contact CARESALIS and just find out, out of that number, if they could tell me how many are for students.
And I'm talking about the cases, not the communication.
Sure.
Okay.
The other thing too is because the service is available for free to anyone in the student's family or anyone in the staff's family too, I don't know if they separate, for example, students versus the
A family member.
Family member's child, so, but I can see what I can get from that.
Okay. I'm just curious, because if we have it in here and we're saying that's a support for students, you know, if it's four hundred and ninety-seven adults using this and not our students, which I don't think that's the case, but we don't know that, right? So, that's why I asked that question.
Yes.
Just to have a better understanding. So, thank you.
Sure.
You want me to keep going with my questions, or you want to give my guys a chance?
Let me, let's cut there.
Okay. Because you have some of the questions. Okay. So, another question that I have is around the police partnership. So, I heard, you know, I hear a lot about the police partnerships, which are great, right? What I didn't quite hear is how those partnerships are creating a bridge with our students. So, I hear a lot about the adults, right, in those partnerships, but not with the kids.
So, with our school resource officers at both Wayne and John Glenn, both of those gentlemen, Officer D'Amico at John Glenn and Officer Sermon over at Wayne, part of their job and part of their expectation of their job through the department is that they're working with students. And I think Officer Donald, who was here previously to Officer D'Amico, really established that, where he was always with students as much as he could. He even coached one of our football teams, you know, as an assistant coach, but it's, you know, the visibility, being in the building, being around them, and it's one of the reasons that the Westland SRO specifically does not wear a typical police uniform. He doesn't wear full uniform because he wants, they want to be approachable. They want to see him as someone who is just another staff member that they can, they can talk to. So, a lot of it is just establishing, at the start of the year, establishing relationships with students at both buildings and just, you know, maintaining those relationships throughout the course of the year.
Okay. And so, I asked that question, thank you for that, and that's great. One of the things that I do think about though is as our multilingual learner population increases and the number of students that we have that are potentially coming from war-torn countries, right, where the police are viewed very differently than they're viewed here, what are we doing to proactively not just stand in the hallway and make myself approachable, but are we doing some things that are
Specific to them.
Exactly.
Right.
Or just anyone, right? Like, how do you approach the police? How do you interact with the police?
I think that's
If I feel like I'm being treated unjust, right?
Right.
How do I, how do I address that?
That's a really good point, because that's something I don't think we've ever really considered before, but it needs to be, because if they are, depending on where they're coming from, they might see someone of authority like that and, you know, not realize, here's someone I can talk to if I have a problem. So, that's, I think that's our next step with our SROs is to make sure that they are very approachable.
Thank you. I was going to ask about support for staff, but we kind of talked about that with CARESALIS. Another question I have, and again, this may come later, is just the number of expulsions that we've had, like, let's say, just the trend data of that, so the number of expulsions along with the number of students that have been referred to the discipline review committee, because again, that's just data to collect to say like, hey, are these things that we put in place actually working, or are we seeing, you know, are we flatlining our numbers? Are we increasing? So, I would just like to see that data.
And I, I kind of, I knew that someone was going to ask that question, didn't bring it, but I can tell you this, last year, between two years ago and last year, the number of expulsions has gone down dramatically because we've gone to that, you know, let's, let's give them a shorter suspension, more support kind of a thing, and, you know, kind of stop that expulsion thing altogether, because you're destroying somebody's educational career when you expel them. So, for, only for egregious acts are they really being considered for expulsion, but I would like to find that, you know, give you actually some hard numbers on that.
That would be great, and I only have a couple more. I'm sorry. So, the next one that I have is you talked about restorative practices. What I would like to ask, if you could give us some examples of restorative practices, like what, for example, as parents are listening to this, they may not know that you did this, and that's considered a restorative practice, right? So, if we could just give a couple examples of that?
Let me give you the most, probably the most basic, and Mr. Beebe, tell me when I'm, when I speak wrong of this, as he is the ranking expert of restorative practices, but let's just say that, you know, two students have an issue, you know, or even better, let's say a student and a teacher have an issue, where the student is disrespectful for, towards the teacher. The student is sent to the office, talks to the administrator, and they might say, let's do a little restorative circle here. So, you go back and you would meet with the, with the teacher and the student, and you'd give each of them an opportunity to say, the teacher says, well, you know, this is what, how I felt when you did this behavior. And then, the student gets a chance to talk and say, well, you know, this is how I felt, which led me to do this. So, it gives each, each of them an understanding, and in many cases, when they're done, each of them understands they hurt the other one, didn't realize they were doing it, but it makes them more cognizant of, you know, their, each other's feelings. And you find that when, when they have a really strong, you know, connection in class where, you know, the students and the teacher have a real good bond, all of a sudden, the teachers, or the students don't want to do anything that's going to hurt that teacher. It becomes much, much more personal, and it's, you know, it's tougher to hurt somebody you really, you really respect. So, again, it's making those connections in class, it's going to turn restorative practices to be real favorable.
Thank you for that.
How was that, Mr. Beebe?
No problem.
C plus? Oh, please, please.
If I could just add one thing about that. So, during a hearing today, just going to share, it was brought up, the student had said, we were talking about a fight that had occurred, and we had asked the student, what made you stop the fight? And the student said, because I saw this staff person, and I have a relationship with them, and so, I didn't want to hurt them. And so, it truly is that relationship building with our staff that ultimately, that restorative that Mr. Besik's talking about, but I just wanted to give an example from today, how we heard directly from a student's mouth, how that impacted their thought process.
That's awesome. Thank you. So, which kind of goes into the next couple of questions that I have, and that's just around the organization, and I don't know this personally, of the high school in terms of AP caseloads. So, are the caseloads for assistant principals by grade level? Are they by last name? And I'm asking that question because I'm wondering, like, just for example, the incident that took place at John Glenn, if there were class meetings held afterward? So, like, that Monday when the kids returned to school, was there a class meeting, like, with the ninth graders, with the tenth graders, with the eleventh graders, or the whole school, or however that was done, to talk about expectations, how to, also, how to de-escalate situations, right? So, if you are a student and you're standing by, so like, Amanda, you just gave, gave a, oh, this is fine, I'm sorry, this is fine, you just gave a great example of how a student talked about caring about the teacher, right? But we also want our students to care about each other and to feel that need to step in or to go and get assistance, right, before something escalates. So, I'm just wondering, that piece, and then to add to that, where's the student voice in everything that you presented when you talk about being proactive, right?
So, let me speak to two of those things real quick. So, the one about the, how they're divided up within the buildings, I can't, I can't speak to that specifically. I know though, at the middle schools though, that they do have, at least every semester, they do have their, their grade level meetings, and they break it down by, by male and female. So, they'll have an all-boys sixth grade, all-girls sixth grades, boys and girls seventh grade. So, they will do that. Now, I cannot, like I said, I can't speak to whether, what they did at the schools, because again, that becomes, go back to that proactive part, where we don't want it to happen again, and we want to bring attention to it, we want to say, these are the things we have in place, we want to make sure that they, they are aware of what's going on. And then, you bring up the part about the, the student voice. I think, you know, as, as long as I've been here, we've always talked a little bit about student voice, but by far, in order to get a really strong district, you need to have student voice in everything you do. So, many of the buildings right now, just in terms of their crisis team, have a student or two who sits on that crisis team. So, you know, we're starting it that way, but when we're talking about, you know, the rest of these things, whether it's, you know, discipline or something like that, some of those things, obviously, we can't have students who are involved in that. So, I think we're, we're building that, but again, that's always the goal, is to get more students involved, because in, in the end, it's their district. These are, it's their schools, and, you know, they need to have a voice.
Absolutely. Okay, great. And then, the last question I have, and everything that you talked about, which is absolutely awesome, are there any type of, like, after-school programs, mentoring programs, things of that nature that allows kids to not have to always rely so heavily on the teaching staff, right? Like, you, sometimes, and I, I mean, we know this as parents, at least I know it as a parent, I can say something to my son five hundred times, and somebody, a complete stranger off the street can come in and say the exact same thing I said, and then he's like, oh, this is such a great idea, I'm getting ready to, you know, do X, Y, and Z, and you're like, I know I've been preaching this, right? So, just that piece of bringing in some outside people to build relationships and, and, yeah, so you know what I'm saying.
So, we continue to have really good partnerships with both Bright Futures and Champions, who, you know, both offer that mentoring piece, you know, gives, give the student a break from their, their regular day-to-day teachers and adults and have them be able to talk to people as well.
And Bright Futures is free, but Champions is not.
Correct.
Right? So, then, I would like to see us look at bringing in some other outside groups to do some things. So, there's, I know there are, for example, there's a young lady that does some things with candle making, which brings in STEM, and it's for, it can be for girls or boys, but they can do, make candles and write affirmations to go with the candles. There's the Black Male Educators Alliance. So, there are so many different organizations outside of here to allow us to start to just partner with them, to bring in some other faces to our students, so just something to think about.
Kronk Gym.
Okay.
With mentoring programs and after-school tutoring. We also partner with Hype Athletics, which we even have a stronger partner now with them through our athletic activity program. So, I agree with you, and we do have some other things there, and I don't even know for sure, but I know some middle schools have some things going on outside of what Mr. Besik said, but the Kronk Gym one was a really, really cool thing where they were bringing in, we were actually blessing the kids there, and they were working with mentors. They had after-school programs. Before they even did anything athletically, they had to do academics.
So, does that still exist?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, just going even beyond athletics, because we have some kids that are not athletic, right? They're not even interested in, in athletics. So, just something to think about when we talk about being proactive, because a lot of things can be caught in that piece as well, some of those, just needing a different outlet, right? Because sometimes, home just isn't the place that kids want to be, and so, if they can get an opportunity to not have to go directly home after school, or they know, two days out the week, I get an opportunity to not be in that environment, I think that, that's a big help for kids.
The other partnership too, that I think is important to highlight, because we, we do have partnerships, I agree, I think we can always bring in more, is our youth assistance programs, because they are diversion programs, and, and youth don't have to be in trouble to work with either program, whether it be Westland Youth Assistance or Wayne Youth or Wayne Youth Services. And not only do they provide support to the student, but they provide support to the whole family. So whether it be parenting sessions, or a support group, or whatever that looks like, I, I do just wanna lift that we have really strong partnerships with both of them. They provide services both in our buildings, but also in the community for students to go to and provide those additional things, like you mentioned tutoring, they do as well. So just wanted to lift that.
Thank you.
Ms. Sadie Mitchell, then assign.
I just wanna add a couple, because you mentioned athletics, non-athletics, things that we have is our robotics teams, who we have outside people coming and partnering, and also online gaming, which you know how much the kids sit in their bedroom by themselves. This is a really cool thing, because they're all together, and the coaches are young, and it's a great mentoring. And then also, this is on the athletic things, but we have Gateway Church that comes in and does a basketball program, and it is mentoring and teaching basketball. And I would be remiss if I did not mention our elementary athletics program, because our coaches work hard with those kids, and those fourth and fifth graders love their sports season. So we really do have a lot of opportunities from sports, arts, and STEM activities.
And just, I wanna be clear, so when I, I knew about the elementary, and that's awesome, I'm, I'm really thinking about high school, right? Because just in our community, we don't have anything for our high schoolers, right? Like, once you get to a certain age, it kinda just stops. And that's not saying the district, I'm saying just our community on a whole, right? And so, you know, we all know idle time is the devil's time, right? So, kids get into things, so if we can just find ways to just occupy them, occupy their minds, right? That's, that's what I was asking about. So more so, that, that high school age group, like those ninth graders and those 10th graders, yeah, they need a lot of love. Just saying.
Ms. Sadie Mitchell?
Well, Ms. May asked, asked most of my questions. I was gonna talk about the engagement of the students and getting them involved. So I do have a question, after the incident from, from John Glenn, the fighting and everything, and I know he just, Mr. just said that, you know, the middle school grade level had a meeting. I'm just wondering, was it an assembly or a meeting for the high school students? Because it need to be talked about, it need to get straightened out, and I hope you guys are planning on coming back Monday to talk to the community, you know, because it happened. I called it the elephant in the room, and we need to straighten it out to move forward. And the other thing I had, what is the CTAC? So the, the threat assessment, that's more like a questionnaire?
Correct.
Just to see if they have the, you know, if they have a plan?
It's really, it's a comprehensive, it's really comprehensive, it just asks them different things, like, you know, what their thoughts are, what are they thinking, do they have the means to do it, you know? And it just, it kinda, it goes through and just really digs deep to see what exactly the level of threat is.
Right, okay. And, and the other thing with Kier Salis, I'm hoping that they offer the wraparound services for the students and the families.
Wraparound, can you explain a little more?
Well, wraparound service and mental health is basically from the child's behavior, working with the family also, and offering them different outside activities.
So what Kier Salis, their purpose really is to help the family take the lift off of their plate of finding a mental health or substance use provider. So whether that be a therapist, whether that be somebody to do medication management, if you are looking for a support group, recovery services. The other thing that Kier Salis is going to start offering within the next few weeks here to our, our school community is assisting them with linking to community-based services as well. So, it's really difficult when you are in that moment of struggling with either mental health, addiction, what have you, to, to navigate those difficult waters. So that's the purpose of Kier Salis. So, wraparound in that sense, yes, that is what they do.
So Kier Salis is just like a referral?
Not a referral, they do the work for you.
They do the work for you?
Yep. So for example, if I put a referral in for a student, they typically call that family within the hour, even sooner than that. I know we mentioned this evening about the discipline hearings. I often do them during the discipline hearings, before the student even leaves. And then that care companion is what it's called, will call the family, they find out what their preferences are. So do you prefer to see maybe a female clinician? You wanna see somebody that's only five miles from your home, or closer, if you don't have transportation? If you don't have insurance, you might need a free or sliding scale option? So they take all of your preferences into account, and then they start working to find somebody that meets what your needs are, that has an opening, and meets your financial criteria.
Okay.
And then they even help you set the appointment. They call you after the appointment happened to make sure that you were happy with that provider. If not, they will offer to start that, that process over. And again, this is something that is offered complimentary to our families and staff.
Okay, well, I, I appreciate y'all coming, and I'm only gonna bring up youth sports, athletics, because I went to a game for the elementary level, the tag football game, my grandson plays on it, and I was just so impressed, because the referees are high schoolers. And it, it's a good feeling to be there serendipity and have all the schools there and everything, and the kids love it, and the girls, they will stop anywhere and start cheering. But that's a great program. And I, I was gonna save it for Monday, but you brought it up.
Those cheerleaders are really student leaders, too, because if you noticed on Saturday, they were leading their own cheers, just like they do at the high schools with the cheer captains.
Right. Oh, and one last thing I wanted to say, you know, as far as the student engagement, you know, when they come for discipline, maybe it's something that we can offer them, you know, and it might be, you know, one of the stuffs that they need to come back to school, you know? I don't know what it could be, you know, a sport, you know, maybe get them occupied in a sport or something, you know? It's just something to engage the student and get to know the kid. We have to go back to, you know, family style, where we knew our kid, we knew our kids, we knew our neighbors. When we grew up, our teachers lived on our same block and stuff like that, but it's not that, like that no more. But we have to go back to that same mentality, like that is our neighbor and everything. And just try to love on the kids as much as they can and engage them and, and support them.
Yeah, actually, today I actually was talking to Paul Mott with the youth assistance program, and they're training a lot of mentors, and he said that they wanted more referrals from us. So I'm glad we're having this conversation, I just talked to him today about that, so I didn't know it was a little gap, but they would like more referrals from Wayne Westland, and if we can deepen the partnership, that'd be awesome. And there's a couple of nonprofits I know that wants to partner with us, called Fearless Minds, they do a lot of stuff with women, young girls, mentoring, full and fabulous. And there's a Saturday I met with the organization, they help women in entertainment. And it's another group that wants to work with our students to get them into like videos and photography. And the guy that does, owns a WGPR, they have a radio station in Detroit, and they would actually take our students from Wayne Westland and go down there to interview the people from the Lions and Tigers, so any people that's interested in media productions. So I just met with them over the weekend. So we'll coordinate and get them all together, so they can do presentations and stuff.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for being here tonight. I've really enjoyed this fifteen-minute presentation. The Tigers are one to one after the second, and I hold you all responsible. But I do want to say that it's been my honor to serve on the discipline committee, and it truly is a, it, it truly is a, a time of restoration for a lot of our students. And I have never seen John Besik with his sleeves not rolled up, so I ju, okay, all right, good. So I, I just wanted to say, it's been, thank you for all you do.
Great presentation.
Mr. Cox?
Thank you. Mr. Besik, when you were speaking earlier about light speed, you mentioned that one of the things it was a benefit is that the students actually are aware that what they're typing into the search goes somewhere, and just, which I think might act as a deterrent. I don't know, they might just decide to get another device. But with respect to that, what kind of, see, going back to the event at John Glenn, I'm, I'm concerned about it, not just because of the safety and security of the people involved and the people that attended, but of course, it, it looks terrible when that happens here. And all of the work that Ms. Heinz was talking earlier about some of the outreach work we could be doing, it's all thrown overboard the minute the entire region finds out that there's a, how many people were involved in that fight?
It's like thirteen, twelve or thirteen that were.
And, and it's interesting that tonight's presentation, right afterward, we talk about how not having any suspensions has been such a great outcome. And I'm wondering, how many of those people, maybe, were in that? Do we know why that occurred?
No, they, they.
Can we, can we work with the police department to find out what the problem was?
We can, but they, they said they don't even know exactly what started it, and what, you know, what transpired prior to that. They have no clue. They, they have, I think they had eighteen, nineteen different videos that they were viewing from, you know, participants or observers. They looked at all of it, and there's, it's like sixty-four pages of report, but they have no, no basis to say this is what started it.
And this is the reason why I opened my comments with the issue about light speed, because I thought, maybe if the school district decided that we were going to up our security infrastructure at both of the high school fields, and what I mean by that is video monitoring. So that, because what we did, and the administration took action right away, and I, and I praise them for that, but what, what happened is, we limited the freedoms of the people, they weren't even involved in any of this, and now I have to pay the bill, because some people can't act right. And that, that long-term can't be the solution, but maybe if people know when they come on, onto the field, everything that happens is being recorded by the school district, and there's going to be some accountability. And these days, closed-circuit TV cameras and video, that can't be that much of an expense. And, and I suspect that whatever action the administration took to limit that from happening, I'll bet a lot of parents said, you're not going to the game. That, that would've come out of my mouth, I think. You know, find something else to do. And we don't know if this, this problem's on the road, and we're gonna have it tomorrow or next Friday. I, I don't know, I, I would be willing to look at that. You know, I don't wanna set up the school district like it's some kind of a, but it needs to be a safe place. So I don't know, it's my thought.
Which is interesting, because I had, I did have a parent, I think, two weeks ago, who emailed and said, you need to set, set schools up as if they're prisons. And I'm thinking, that's not a, that's not an educational environment when you have a school.
No, more like they're the nursery in a room where mom and dad have a monitor, so they know what's going on with the child.
Awareness.
Not a prison, but a nursery. They're our children, after all. Okay, thank you.
Yep, so I went to the, the homecoming game at Wayne, I did notice that it wasn't hardly any students, but I did get a complaint, because they had alumni group that was there for like the homecoming and stuff, and they were turned away, so I did get a little complaint. They donate money like Class Seventy-Four, so. Even though we have the rules that strict, like the retirees that's coming, they give us money, alumni, like.
Boy, I heard it, too.
Yeah, they should've been turned away from the game.
My phone was ringing up, they were not adding people.
Hi, Anne, I, I had a few things. You know, you mentioned a lot of partnerships, and I saw in there, the slide, that we do, you know, have the partnerships with the police departments and everything. But as far as a lot of the other partnerships, it was, you know, with the Wayne Youth Services, the Westland Youth Services. Do you find that we have the partnerships we need in some of our other communities? Or is there more we could do there, and is there stuff, something we as a board could do to help get some of those partnerships?
We need a partnership in Inkster, which is, you know, through no fault of theirs. I mean, they have limited resources, they have a limited police, but I think that's the area where we probably could use most of the support. And we've met with, no matter what administration is in that, in that city, we've met with them time and again, and, you know, they, they profess and they, they promise things, and, you know, in the end, limited resources, they just don't have the manpower to supply those things. I mean, we've asked for the basic things, like a walk-through David Hicks, you know, walk through the building once a week, just to have a presence in there, and say hi to the kids and the staff and everything. But, you know, they said if, if possible, because I think they only have two cars on the road, you know, each shift, they just don't have that capability to do it. But if, if you, you know, look for an area where we could improve, or we really could use some help, without a doubt, it would be that, that particular city.
Yeah, that kind of goes into my next question as well, is that, you know, about, we have the school resource officers at Wayne, and it was, is there something we can do to get more interaction with the Inkster police? Because I think it is beneficial for kids to get to know a police officer in their own community, you know, so they know a police officer in the community if they ever needed to call somebody or talk to somebody for help or anything.
So you definitely should reach out to the Inkster Reserve Police Department, because they're the auxiliary police, and they're really helpful, and they help with the parades and different things, and they have a lot of manpower. So you could probably reach out to the auxiliary police, maybe, for some assistance. And that's where I started at high school, I was a reserve police officer at high school through Inkster. So they're, you know, that, that might even can help with our law enforcement and our fire careers to get that partnership even with the reserve police officers out in Inkster.
Thank you.
I just have.
No, no, definitely.
I just have one, well, I, I can reach out to the Inkster police, and, you know, and, and, and they do need that walk-through David Hicks, you know, and we'll work on that. But I was gonna say, I did have one last thing I wanted to say, but I can't remember, of course. But thank you guys for what y'all did today. I, I mean, I appreciate this. This actually takes a load off.
Just had two more quick questions. The other one about how we don't know what started the fight, you know? Please have this whole big report. Have we had conversations with the students involved yet, or are we still?
Absolutely. And in fact.
Have we asked them why?
The last, yeah, and it comes down, today we heard a couple students come in for hearings, and it was a couple of young ladies, and the, what started it all, the trigger was a boy. You know, and it's, it's, you know, they were texting back and forth, and it just turned into a big giant fight because of a boy. And I said, first of all, I think it was, it was one of our administrators said, you know, to the girls, don't let boys do that to you. And it's, it's a good life lesson, but again, it's, it's turning into a he said, she said, and then it turns into this giant fight over something that five years from now, these two girls aren't gonna remember anything about why they were fighting.
Sure.
So I mean, that, that's, everyone who comes in, we ask them for, for, you know, we ask them what happened, give us their side of the story, what would you do differently? And, you know, by and large, most of them are like, I, I just would walk away, I wouldn't be part of that. But again, you know, you, you are adolescents, you're at a game like that, tensions are high, the excitement's high, something happens, they all wanna be a part of it, and then, you know, I, I can see where it would get out of hand like that. But again, when our, when our law enforcement is, is under attack and they're not safe, that's when drastic measures have to be taken.
And then just on a point of, I have two things that I would recommend, and one is that, you know, if it hasn't already taken place, that in the high schools, that they are having some sort of meeting, whether it's class meetings, like you were saying the middle schools do, especially after an event like that that happened. You know, the reference I used earlier, when I was talking to Ms. May about this, is I'm sure, I mean, have you seen the movie Mean Girls? You know, you almost seen a Mean Girls assembly, like, for people to kinda get out and see how it's affecting. Because it doesn't just, it is affecting classmates, and, you know, there's seniors right now that, at Wayne Memorial, that didn't get to attend their, you know, senior year homecoming game. There, there's a community that's gotten affected by this. I mean, it's homecoming. Homecoming by definition is supposed to be a time that members of the community can come to the game. So it's, I, I do think it's important to have these bigger conversations, maybe as a class or as a school, about how this is affecting others around you when you do something like this. And then, the last thing was that I do encourage, you know, getting that student voice on all the things we talked about. Just at our last meeting, that was something we talked about, that maybe we could do better at up here, as well as getting student voice. But just wanna thank you all for all the work you're doing. And, you know, I know you deal with some of the hardest issues that our district faces day in and day out, so, thank you very much.
I remember my question.
Oh, good.
So you, okay, so the policy that went in place for the football game, five, it's not a policy, because it's from the police. Okay, but.
It's a rule.
It's a rule?
Yeah.
It's Wayne Westland rule, because on face, on social media, it says, Westland Police.
Yeah, ours is the rule for that game, like the guidelines for that game.
For that game?
Correct.
Okay. So the game's moving forward, I guess this, my question is, on the eighteenth, the seniors get to take the field, and they can only have five registered people come and see them take the field?
Are you still doing that for?
So I can speak to that. So administration is currently meeting, because we are looking at loosening that, right? Because it's kind of like you tighten up, and then we wanna give people those opportunities. So I can tell you that the John Glenn administration team, literally, I think it was yesterday morning, said, let's think through some of these ideas, right, so that we're not as tight, so that it's, even if we tie it to PBIS, we know we have the seniors coming, right? So we do wanna loosen, we just gotta see, can you take that same concept, right? Still use the codes, right, as we did online, but to definitely not have it so tight. Still use the codes, right, as we did online, but to definitely not have it so tight. So to be determined, still in the planning phase.
May I ask, as they're meeting and having these conversations, like you have student Congress or student council, can they please bring them to the table?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions? All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I know this meeting's mostly supposed to be focused on our next items, the finance items and the budget audit, but I just thought it was important to have this conversation. Will we continue having these conversations over the next few months? But, you know, we just want to make sure we have this conversation since this is something very recent in our community.
Can I just clarify one thing, Dr. Mr. Gray, I'm sorry. And then next, what we're gonna do, instead of this being at the board meeting to do the presentation, this is gonna be the next community engagement meeting on November 7th. So, just, yeah.
You're not, you're not, they love those.
Next item on the agenda is 193.25 Citizens Comments. Okay.
We had a tiger here.
Yeah, I did, was that intentional? Okay. All right, well, next, uh, next on my agenda is 194.25 Finance Committee Review and Discussion. Ms. May?
We have one presentation.
We have a presentation. But you're, you're on the main header of this, so.
One item, one item, one finance.
Oh, that's what we're shifting to now, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're shifting.
I was like, you want me to do the comments? Okay, I apologize. So, we did it different this time. Okay, so.
I mean, we don't have a reporter or anything for you.
No, we're good. Okay, so Mr. Bibi. You shifted on me.
He moves fast when he wants to.
Yeah, yeah, I move fast all the time.
He had tiger today.
Yeah, well, thank you all so much for letting me speak on tonight regarding Inform K-12. I know you remember probably back in August when Jacinda Samara had brought the Inform K-12 quote to a board meeting and you all asked for more information. And so with that, we went back to Inform K-12 and just to get some basic information about the program and what it does and how it benefits Wayne Westland Community School District. The first place we started though with them was with the price, because at the time, we were dealing with major financial issues. And so we were able to get the price down from $26,519.2 from December until June, I believe it was June 30th, we were able to get that price down to $24,900. So we were able, first of all, to bring that price down. The other questions mainly were around the process, process. I believe we had some staff folks who were a little bit upset about their, their interactions with Inform K-12, but as a result of that, I did some research specifically in our business department, specifically with Diane Remington, to talk about how Inform K-12 impacts her and what she does. So she's mainly in charge of conferences and she was saying to me, "Please do not take away Inform K-12 from me and send me back to paper processes." Basically, it allows us to basically track where our form processes are. I know in the past, if, let's say if a form just happened to be on somebody's desk, it could get stuck there, but the Inform K-12 allows us to track where it is and then to nudge folks to keep that process moving. I also met with Maria Metter, who had played a huge part of our field trip form process in terms of creating that process in collaboration with Inform K-12. And she also spoke extremely highly in regards to how it streamlines the process and just puts everything at our fingertips, but not minimizing what staff, staff concerns because the, there is a possibility where once again, it can get stuck on someone's desk. In our interaction with Inform K-12, they're willing to come in and to train our staff for free. So they have been more than collaborative, they've been with us since 2021. So I gave you all some basic information of the number of different processes that we utilize with them. And even as it relates to conferences that you all attend, we go through April, oh, April Ostrander, basically utilize this Inform K-12 as well throughout that process in regards to your all's paperwork and streamline, once again, streamlining the process. So with that being said, I am recommending that we, if we would, if we could go ahead and go with their prorated term, prorated term of $24,900, I think that would be great for us to go from December 1st to, let me see what that is, make sure I got that right, December 1st through June 30th. Any questions?
2025.
2025, yes.
Do you have any questions?
I just have one, so I'm looking at the ones that has the, for August 2024 is a pie graph and then it kind of goes through each of the, I guess, ways that we use the form.
Yes.
And then the completion time. So is there conversation around, because this was some of the stuff that was raised by staff and I know that was like the processes, right? So has there been discussion around like why, for example, conference approval is 12 days?
Yep.
Like I'm looking at some of these that are like less than a day, some are two days, but then you have some of the ones that, to me, kind of is what impacts the staff, right? And they're like 12 days.
Yeah.
So has there been conversation just around how to shorten that time?
And once again, that, as I spoke with Inform K-12, that's where, you know, even as Diane Remington talked about, it's on somebody's desk, it's, it's in somebody's email and they have to move that process on. Or it may have been sent back to an employee and then they don't realize it's there and they need to make a change. So once again, it's like any relationship, it's about communication. And so, so, you know, obviously this is, it's, it's still a work in progress, but once again, I think they're willing to come to the table, train, support, even, you know, they were flexible even with the price and those kind of things to keep our business.
And Ms. May, to that question that you just lifted, one of the beauties of having Inform K-12 or a digital platform is you can go and identify where an error was made. And speaking of the, one of the community members or teachers that lifted it, we were able to identify that it was human error on that person's part because we went through the checks of how it played out with the Inform K-12.
Okay, and not that I'm not supportive of it, I just want to make sure, like, I'm looking at vacation requests, 60 days, right? So stuff like that where we have this data.
Right.
What are we, this isn't Inform K-12, this is us. So are we looking at our data and saying, "Hey, what processes do we need to tweak, you know, make sure people know, hey, will you submit a form, it's gonna come back to you signed? Do we have, you know, the expectation around turnaround time on these?" That kind of stuff. So, you know, do the, I don't know if the administrative assistants, like we use it in Plymouth Canton, right? And so I'm notorious, I used to be, for something getting stuck because I didn't, it, the emails would all get clogged up, right? So we have someone that, she sends the reminders, but like now I've trained, I learned how to go in there and find the stuff, so like now I check it.
I'll, I'll, I'll be the first to admit, guilty as admitted. My administrative assistant will from time to time say, "Alex, something's running on your desk," because she can look in Inform K-12.
Yeah, so that's what we, just put some systems in place, right? Because they do, like I know, if you have like a conference request and there's 50 of them coming in.
Right.
Those 50 emails, they, you can't tell it's 50 emails, right? Like I, I know that part of it, but just that, what are the supports so that our staffs don't feel like we're spending $25,000 and it's, we're not efficient? Does that make sense?
No, it absolutely makes sense. But I think lifting the issue brought it to light and even as you all kind of talked about, even myself, to look through my mailbox and, "Oh, I'm the one that's holding this up." So once again, bringing the issue to the surface, I thought, I think brings it to light and I think we'll be more diligent about moving things forward, moving forward.
Great. That was it.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, seeing none.
I have one more question.
Sure.
So you said that they're willing to come in to train the staff, so that's the staff that feel like they need training?
Sure, we really haven't identified exactly who that would be. We just, we were, brought them to the table and said, "Hey, are you all willing to come in and support some of our folks who may struggle with the product?" So it may be beneficial for administrator supervisors to be trained, may be more beneficial for staff to be trained, but we'll, we'll work through that.
Absolutely.
And Ms. Bibi, can I say too, I know a lot of the things with conferences that come through, like, you know, they'll have the date, but then there's usually just some missing pieces, right? Like you were supposed to attach something with it and they didn't, and send them with, Inform K-12, for, like, one of the most, I get why we have to do it, but it has to go all the way back to the first person who started it. So even if it comes to me, I can't then go in and correct because you're off by one account number, I have to send it back. So I think, you know, just like bigger picture too, it's that, right? Or the person, especially if you're a classroom teacher, you might have, because of whatever the reasons, you didn't do A through Z, so it comes back to you, then kind of like you, you don't realize the email's in there, I do that too, and by the time it goes back, so it just creates a, it's usually, even we've all done it sitting in this room, it's usually something with human error or didn't check it. But, yeah, it's just the process.
Agreed.
But it's wonderful.
I think it is too, and returning to paper, I.
Yeah, and I can, I was that person that also would have the pile of process for payrolls to sign on my desk, so now it's in the emails.
I prefer this much more than that. All right.
Thank you so much for coming back with the information.
Thank you.
Yep, and we'll be voting on that at the next meeting.
Thanks.
Next time is the investment report, Ms. Claire.
Okay, it's in your packet. I just wanted you, a couple notations, as you can see our interest rates have gone down a little bit, as the feds have lowered that this past month. And you can see that our cash went down by 30 million and that is because we wired that money back to the state, it's in a, it's in an escrow account, it's not really with the state, but it's in an escrow account with the state of Michigan. And that's all that's really of consequence here. Any questions?
Not necessarily about the report, but just, and maybe I'm missing it, are we working with Mr. Walsh? Are we not working with Mr. Walsh?
Yeah, Mr. Walsh is coming tomorrow to be trained, I gave him access to SMART. And he, he's, he's gonna download the trial balance every month and run it through some kind of a configuration he has. And he's able to get in and everything right now and get around in there, but he wants further training, he's coming at 1:00 tomorrow.
Okay, great, thank you. I was just curious because we signed up for it, so it's like I don't see any charter, so. Thank you. And next is the check register, right?
Yes.
Ms. President?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We got a previous engagement, I gotta go.
Okay.
So, yep, we spent $4.4 million in either wires or checks this past month of September. If you have any questions on anything, you can let me know.
Any questions? All right.
Or you can look at it from now till board meeting time and come up with something.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is 195.25 Citizens Comments on non-agenda items. We're still the only ones in the room, who will move on to 196.25 Acting Superintendent's Report Comments.
I am listening.
Well, yeah, but you could talk at the end. You get your own special time to talk.
I just want to thank everyone who presented today. This week, we also held our first Coffee and Conversation Community Meeting where we generated many ideas and possible solutions around the topic of transportation. We also developed an FAQ from questions raised at the meeting, which will be posted on our website soon. And lastly, our district trunk retreat is next Thursday and we hope to see everybody there.
Thank you. Next time is 197.25 Review and Recommendations Board of Education. I'll start with Dr. Weaver, I'll start over here.
I have nothing to say.
Okay, Ms. Hines?
I'd like to say that we have the Wayne Westland Kiwanis Club. We meet on the second Tuesday and the fourth Tuesday of the month at the Westland Library, 3:15, and we were able to get a group to sponsor the kids over at John Glenn High School to pay $400. So now I'll be working with some of the kids over at John Glenn. I definitely want to get over to Wayne Memorial and some of the Stevenson and the other schools, but it's actually going pretty good with these different community partnerships. And that'll help too with the behavior with these different clubs and community service and literacy.
Ms. May?
Just thank you for everyone that presented this evening. Thank you for adding the information around with Mr. Bessek and his team to our agenda. And again, thank you to Ms. Claire Jewel for all her work and just kind of getting us in a better place and your patience and, yeah, thank you for that. Everything with that?
Ms. Ebony Mitchell?
I just want to say thank you to everyone that came out and presented. You know, I just feel like I'm leaving this board member as an informed board member and I appreciate that. But Ms. Hines, I got a question for you. You said that they supporting the kids at John Glenn, what are they doing to support them?
It's a key club, so they're helping to get the club started at the school so they could do like literacy service projects and stuff like that.